I'd like to call the September 5th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Or. Mr. Smith. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Hedrick.
Here.
Mr. Bazani.
Yes, here.
Yeah, for.
Would you all please stand and join Pastor Tipton in the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Let us come to the Lord in prayer. Dear Lord, Creator of all, we come tonight as your children created in your image. We acknowledge that we are the caretakers of all the creation that surrounds us and all those living in our community. We pray for those to whom who have taken on this arduous role of leading and caring for our community. We ask you to to guide them, to help them discern and care for all those in the community beyond their own desires and needs. Tonight, we ask for guidance and wisdom as they meet and manage with limited resources and conflicting needs. Bring wisdom, strength, and compassion to all gathered here. For truly, we serve you above all, along with our great nation. Join me in this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like a motion for approval of the minutes from March 28th, April 4th, and April 5th.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matters presented by the board.
Ms. Steele, where do we end up? You're gonna handle it, County Administrator?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Right, right on.
Mr. Bazani.
Just a question. I saw two school buses at Fox's garage two weeks ago. I'm just kinda wondering, if you built a $7 million facility, why are those two school buses in there?
I will be glad to check into that.
That's all I have.
All right. Any other items? Let's move to county administrator items. Ms. Steele?
Okay, I have a number of different things and a lot of good news. So we received word from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, that the county's annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year '22, informally we call the CAFER, received the certificate for achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And the report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. And I don't think I had read that part before, and to think that you have to write a financial report to motivate people to read it, that's that's quite a criteria check off. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management, and most importantly, by the financial staff. So Maria's here and the others are congratulating. Next, our very own Trish Cronin fulfilled all the requirements of the Master Municipal Clerk, or MMC, program of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and she has earned her MMC designation. It's only awarded to municipal clerks who complete demanding educational requirements and have a record of significant contributions to their local government, community, and state. Trish has served as a leader in the State Association, helping the other clerks in fulfilling their roles. She is actively involved in the county employees programs, including the charitable ones that help out members of our community. And I said, most importantly, she does young men's work of keeping all of us straight. So congratulations to Trish. Gloucester Day was this past Saturday, and we will be posting more videos for people to see on the GloucesterCollaboration.org site. Had a lot of fun. We had a visit with the Mock Mayor and the Town Prior from Gloucester, U.K. And we've got some video we'll be posting also from New Jersey. So look for that. And I want to remind that if people will pass the word on to youth ages 13 to 18, and all the Gloucesters around the world, we're having a competition of the Duke's Essay Contest, and that ends on October 16th, and they can win recognition from the Duke of Gloucester himself, as well as financial reward. Legislative announcements came out sort of preliminary to tomorrow's budget meeting. And so things were have in general been decided, but we sure don't know what it's gonna necessarily mean for Gloucester County. I did highlight a few things and sent that out to the board for you all to read through. Some of the impactful things are raises for state employees, law enforcement, elected officials, teachers, et cetera. One change, though, is the raise does not go into effect until December 1st or December 10th. I'm not sure why they did the 10th of them, and it's a payday or something. And I anticipate coming back to the board and speaking about what we had talked about in our budget for county employees and hopefully matching that. There's additional funding, quite a bit, for some positions within the school system, oh, the support systems, and also even including infrastructure. And there's a lot of increased funding for mental health treatment, which is desperately needed, and our jail systems and the recovery of funds there, water quality, just a whole list of things. So it'll probably take a couple of weeks before we'll start getting our notes from the comp board of what it means for our folks. The last thing I wanted to do was to address broadband. And I'm gonna summarize information tonight, and then we will put the summary on the website tomorrow as like the latest news. Eric Beech, our IT Chief of Information Officer, had requested a schedule and an update with the different things that have been happening. And while it's not the news we want, it's fair and it's understandable. Right now, the Terrana equipment, which doesn't matter, nobody should be expected to know what, you know, equipment brands or anything, but that's what they want to replace from what has been installed thus far. And they are awaiting approval still from our regional communication system, which Motorola has to approve it. So in other words, Terry Hall, who many of you know, he sends it off to Motorola, it has to go through their system and come back, where they study the engineering. So while that tower is almost, it's identical to the one at Beaver Dam, and they anticipate putting up identical equipment, you could understand, they do not want to submit other applications that have to have engineers' approval if for some reason it doesn't work. So the plan is, as soon as they get their approval, it's going to be a two to three week lead time for the climbers to get here. They will not commit until they know that the equipment is here. Once the equipment is installed, they're going to test it with their initial customers and make sure it's working properly and give it a week or so, and monitoring it before they start putting out for new customers. The co-location situation with the Bethel and Peaslee Tower is the same thing that they need to give Verizon the latest drawing of all the proposed equipment, because that's what, you know, they've already gotten permission from Verizon, the Verizon subcontractor, who approves equipment actually going on the, you know, the tower that looks at all the engineering. They want to make sure they give them the right, so they don't want to, they want to wait until we know everything is good, because they've already done this once. So the three tower build-out sites, that's something that our county attorney, Mr. Wellmont, has been worked on some time ago, that's still on hold too. So again, as soon as we know about the equipment, they hope, they've gone through the site plan process, it's almost completely, and we have the the site drawing that needs to come back, but they don't, they need to have the equipment exactly matched up. So when I took that calendar and sort of put it on today's date and thinking what Motorola said, what I think we're looking at is an approval from Motorola around September 15th. Then that would mean the two to three week time, the climbers aren't gonna come till probably around October 6th, and then they'll be testing and all, and I'm thinking that may be October 20th with the initial customers. And so my thought is around the 1st of November, they will start installing on the new customers that are accessible just to the landfill tower, and at the same time, we'd be trying to get the permits all straight for the other towers. And I would anticipate probably the December or the January board meeting will have the MOU to come back, it's gotta go to the school board for use in Achilles, as well as to you all. So hopefully, that will happen. But once they get up on the big towers, they'll get a lot of the people. We are still looking at a December 31st deadline from the state and to finish the body grant, and I don't anticipate any problem with that. I know it's very disappointing to people that it's not been faster. The good news, and I know that my family's experienced this, and I've talked to them about it, that some of the cell service has gotten so much better that open broadband is not as in much, as the same demand as it was. And there's more competition, we know, and we're trying to work with Verizon about the FIOs and still monitoring what's coming out on the body grants. So there will be more competition here, there, and everywhere, but for right now, the people who are in the remote areas, if they don't get cell service, you know, trying to go wireless doesn't work, but for those who do, the cell service is probably their best bet.
Thanks, Ms. Steele. So for clarification, just for the people that are watching, the equipment that was provided earlier, we were having issues with being able to get through trees, right?
Exactly.
And does that mean that, okay, with the new equipment, we shouldn't have that problem, does it mean that the equipment that these people have in their houses has to be changed also?
Some, yes, some switching out of some parts and not other parts, and they've already started working with that so that the people are ready to go.
And those people that have the initial equipment know what's going on?
Yes, yeah, there's only a handful in Gloucester and a little bit bigger handful in Matthews, but yes. And, you know, it's Nokia equipment was supposed to work to go through tree coverage, but it did not, and I mean, I know of other people who are delayed, whether it's fiber or whatever their product is, a lot of these projects take so much longer than you anticipate, unfortunately.
How much is due to just competition with the fact that this company is probably involved in other projects that they have to, I know you were complaining to them that they didn't have enough personnel here on site, has that been rectified?
I think they have helped with some of that, but not enough, but until they start, when they know they've got the equipment in place and they can start rolling out the actual hookups, they're gonna bring up teams, and we are gonna demand they bring in as many as they can, and I think they will. They are very regretful and feel like they've got egg on their face, and they understand the board's displeasure about this, they've heard it from our staff. They want, you know, it's like anybody who's in a pickle, you wanna get out of it as fast as you can, and they do too, and they want to have good customer service, as they do. If you look on their LinkedIn site, you will see in all kinds of reports about how popular that they are other locations.
I guess what's silly, are we gonna have to do this again next summer? Because they're putting this equipment up while the leaves are down.
No, the the equipment goes through any kind of foliage, that's the, that's, I mean, it should.
It's just a concern.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Thank you, appreciate the time on that, I know it's an important topic.
There are no scheduled presentations. We have two public hearings tonight, so we have, we're gonna open the citizen comment period. You can speak about anything other than what's on the two public hearings. So if you'd limit yourself to three minutes on each topic, I would appreciate it. Please come forward, state your name and magisterial district, and come on. This is his handout. This is that guy's handout.
Good evening, my name is George Hanley, I'm a resident of Gloucester County. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a subject that I think is absolutely terrifying to me, and I hope it will be to you. It concerns Princess cruise line ships and a partnership deal that they've made with the General Assembly and with the County of York. You may know, or be aware, that in this year's budget for Virginia, Tommy Norman introduced an amendment totaling $15 million to build a new pier at Waterman's Museum on the York County side of the river, and another instrument to help the county and Columbia Williamsburg and the Waterman's Museum on the guise that's gonna increase tourism. Well, there'll be no economic benefit for Gloucester, but there's a tremendous economic environmental impact for Gloucester, and that's what terrifies me. Princess Cruise Line is under indictment from the District Court of, and the Department of Justice for polluting South Florida ports of call, and then 800 ports of call throughout the earth. And in those 800 ports of call, they have been fined $79 million. There are 18 major cruise lines operating in, on the seas of the earth. Those 18 major cruise lines, total, including Princess, $179 million in fines. Princess is far and above the leader of the pack. Now, what does that mean to us in Gloucester? They're gonna anchor at Sarah's Creek, that's on our side. If they're polluting the waters 800 times and other ports of call and continuing to do that, just imagine with me for a minute what it would be like to have a small incident in the York River, what it would do to the shellfish industry, what it would do to the shrimping, to the fishermen, to our entire Waterman's heritage. I mean, it's unthinkable in my mind if something like that could happen. And you remember the $15 million budget? Well, these massive ships with their engines and turbines, when they're anchored at sea, those are still running. Now, for those of you in Gloucester Point, what does that mean? Air quality, that's what it means. It's equivalent to 30,000 tractor-trailer rigs sitting at the foot of the York Coleman Bridge. Or, if you can't visualize 30,000 tractor-trailer rigs, think in terms of 120,000 automobiles emitting toxic chemicals into the air. Cruise ships have scrubbers, you know, like the power stations have, and the scrubbers clean those smokestacks, 3%. They use river water and seawater to clean the smokestacks. Where does it go after the cleaning? Back into the water. So all those toxic chemicals, the nitric oxide, CO2, sulfur, all, and contaminated particles are back in the water. Now, if you're familiar with the Chesapeake Bay.
Sir, your three minutes is up, could you summarize for us, please?
Yes, I can, but it's mighty important, folks. The Chesapeake Bay and the York River estuaries would be impacted by this cruise ship anchored in the river. So what would I hope that this Board of Supervisors could do? Well, what I hope that you could do would be vote as a board to ban large cruise ships more than 200 in the York River, and notify York County, that's your, that's your position. They can take adjustment action. Advise your state agency for environmental quality control to investigate. Ask thems to investigate the water quality. The Chesapeake Bay Natural Estuary Act demands that. So, and then I would suggest to you that you ask the state representatives, including those running for election, where they stand on the issue of large cruise ships in the York River. And for those of you in Gloucester Point, that's a mighty important decision. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Jonathan Mafrance, I live in Yorktown, Virginia, at 228 Chair Street. I'm here to also talk about the Princess Cruise Lines, as you can tell by my lovely t-shirt. And Mr. Hanley, I believe, left some petition, copies of petition, look like this. I don't expect you all to sign the petition, but if you scan the QR code, it'll take you to a link, a group of preserved Yorktown citizens, and a whole series of reasons that these cruise ships are a big problem, not only here, but in ports all around the world. The US, number of ports in the US have banned these ships, they've been banned all across the globe, and they're desperate to find new destinations to colonize, and Yorktown is one of those. That's your backyard, our front yard. To, to, to reiterate what Mr. Hanley said about pollution, they are notorious polluters of the environment. They've been criminally convicted for, at the corporate level, implementing means of bypassing safety measures on the ships and dumping pollutants directly into the ocean. Seven felony counts in 2016 at a cost of a fine of $40 million, and during the probationary period, they incurred additional, seven additional felony charges for criminality for, for violating probation requirements. So this is, these are not good actors, and this is a corporate-level scheme in order to save money. It's, Princess Cruise Lines is a $12.2 billion corporation, and their primary responsibilities to the stockholders, they care very little about, you know, the ports they colonize. And that, that's a major concern for the Watermen and the recreational fishers in the York River. The other thing I'm concerned about is this permanent pier at the Waterman's Museum, it's upriver from the bridge, they are presently planning over the long term to have weekly visits to Yorktown by a 3,000-passenger cruise ship. That bridge is gonna be opening twice, once when they come in and once when they leave. Who's to, who's to say what other cruise lines are gonna wanna come in and use that pier? It'll be on private property, there'll be nothing that the government nor any citizens in York County nor anybody in Gloucester County will be able to do about that. That is a long-term goal, and that's been recognized by the CEO of Princess Cruise Lines, the Waterman's Museum, and the York County Government. And the actual allocation of funds in the state budget is $8.5 million, it's been reduced as a, as a, an exploratory amount to figure out the feasibility of doing this concrete pier. I urge you all to become aware of this, we found out about it in a newspaper article in December, this had been going on for a long time, there were no public hearings, no public awareness. If anybody else would like a copy of this petition with the QR code, I have some extra copies, I was gonna leave it to you all, you have them already, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak?
Good morning, or good afternoon, gentlemen. Name is Mike Gatto, I'm in the Ward District. What I'm talking about is the smart meters that we're all putting around the area. The literature I'm having passed around, it'll show you about the side effects and the health and safety of these smart meters are doing to people across the country. Also, smart meters on water, that's what happened in Hawaii, they shut off their water. In the wrong hands with smart meters, they could do whatever they want. Who knows what the climate's gonna be in a couple of years? But, smart meters are a safety and health problem that we're gonna have, especially if somebody has a pacemaker or an autoimmune deficiency. It'll affect them. Read on the literature, if any of you all wanna have the website that I went to, I've been doing this for years, looking at this. I came from a state that had had that, a lot of people got sick, lot of them. So I'd be more than happy to share the website with anybody. I will just, all you have to do is call me or text me, Phil has my number, Mike has my number, Ashley has my number, just text me. That's it, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mike, if you send me that, I'll share it with the board. If you send me that, the email, send me that web address, I'll share it with the board.
Sorry, sir, no worries.
Wasting no time, I'm Susan Austin from the York District, and I would like to follow up on what the previous gentleman said. I don't know if anybody has ever heard of Paul Preston. Paul Preston has started the Lee, the New California Act. They're about to secede from the rest of the state, carrying about 20%, or 50% of the population with them. Anyway, this is the individual I'm talking about, who, he knows a lot about what he's, what he's doing, but he's listened, he's, he's also reporting on the directed energy weapons that have been implicated in the Paradise Fire in California several years ago. The Maui Fire, it's still up in the air, but there have been many reports that there were directed energy weapons used in that fire, also in Turkey, they're undergoing their problems right now. Analog meters and smart meters with power turned off will not start a home fire. Smart meters, oops. Smart meters with power on can be used to burn down your home from the inside out. Incineration at 3,000 degrees, something to think about. This is why the deep state is hiding evidence in Maui with the black barriers and the foreign cops, because they don't want to see, people to see this horrendous site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? All right, we'll close this citizen comment period and move to the first, oh.
Email this one.
No. Did it again. Public, the next item is a public hearing to consider an application for tax exemption by designation from the Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic. Ms. Steele?
Thank you, yes, we do have a public hearing tonight for the, which is part of the normal process for application for the care clinic to have tax-exempt status to their real estate property for 2024, and the information is in the board packet, as well as a resolution, if the board would like to consider that. And their executive director is here tonight, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any?
Mr. Chad, make a motion and we accept the resolution.
Is there a second?
Public hearing first.
Oh, public hearing.
You just wanna close it, open, close it.
I'm sorry, jump the gun.
Well, let's have, let's open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak about the application for tax exemption by the Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic?
Good evening, everybody, Arlene Armentorum, the executive director of the Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic. I just wanna thank you for your consideration of our application and to let you know that the clinic is in its 25th year of serving our community. Right now, we serve just over 400 adults who are uninsured or have Medicaid, and we provide them medical, dental, and behavioral health care. Now, if not for the clinic, I can assure you that most of the people that we see would end up seeking care in the emergency room, which is not a solution, because it's taxing on our health system, and the emergency room is intended for emergency care, not really for primary care. So we're providing primary care for a lot of Gloucesters residents. We are seeing an increase right now in our uninsured patients due to the Medicaid unwinding, since the public health emergency. since the public health emergency ended in May. They have been reevaluating the Medicaid eligibility for folks, and so we've been following it closely on the state's dashboard, but we are seeing an uptick in the number of uninsured folks that we're seeing. So we thank you for your support. We appreciate your consideration, and we look forward to continuing to meet the unmet healthcare needs that are in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, now it's a month like to make a motion.
I did.
We'll close the public hearing.
Sorry, I jumped the gun again. Motion to accept the resolution on page 36. 36, thank you.
Second.
All right, Ms. Steele, will you call the board?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is a public hearing for considering a resolution authorizing the conveyance of county-owned real property on Ernest Lane. Mr. Womacki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you will recall, this is one of three parcels the county obtained pursuant to a property bond submitted by a defendant in a animal cruelty case. That defendant was subsequently convicted of animal cruelty. The county expended in excess of $40,000 in the care and treatment of the animals which the defendant was ostensibly caring for. Two of the three parcels have previously been sold by the county. In order for the county to sell its real property or any interest in real property, it must conduct a public hearing. So that explains why this is on your agenda tonight. This is a 1.41 acre tract of land of unimproved land, Zone B1, RPC 22314 on Ernest Lane in Hayes. The assessed value of the property is $18,580. The offer is $15,000, which there's some disparity there. However, the property was acquired by the county in 2011 or thereabouts, and it's been on the market since then with one or two expressions of interest. However, the last information the county had was that the property did not perk, although I'm not sure whether that's true or not. So as of now, the county owns that property, has for over 10 years. It's been on the market for over 10 years. Although there's a slight disparity between the offering price and the assessed price, it's not been on the tax rules in over 10 years. So tonight, Mr. Chair, you have on your agenda a public hearing to hear public comment whether to authorize the conveyance of that property.
We'll open the citizen comment period. Anyone else like, anyone like to speak about it? Any calls? Did it that done. We'll close the citizen comment period. There's a resolution on page 64.
Got a question, Chair.
Mr. Bazani.
Is this property close to any water and sewer?
I do not know. I would think that there wouldn't be much of an issue with its ability to perk, but I don't know.
Yeah, I looked at the Google Earth, and it's pretty far down off 17, off here. So, yeah, there'd probably be no way they would bring water sewer down to that piece of land.
Okay, so it's not, there's no water confronting that piece of property?
No.
Nothing fronts that piece of property.
Exactly. So do we normally, when we own property like this and we intend to sell it, do we put a sign out there to get potential bidders out there? Are we allowed to do that?
That sign has been out there probably 10 years ago. It hasn't been out there in a while, but.
Okay. My answer is.
At least the assessment has come closer to what people are asking to buy this piece of property for.
Mr. Hedrick.
Is this piece of property adjacent to the other two that we sold?
No, sir. It may be adjacent perhaps to one, but it's not, they were not all contiguous. No, sir.
Okay.
One more question, Chair.
Mr. Bazani.
That's a good question. Are there any other properties near that property that sold recently as a sample of potential sales?
I do not know.
Should we do that research?
Certainly a valid question.
Should we do that research before we convey this piece of property? Make sure it's completely?
Had this not been on the market for over 10 years, I would tend to agree. My opinion is no, because this has wasted everyone's time.
I don't know, it's taxpayer's property. I don't know if it wastes anybody's taxpayer's property.
It's not, it's our property. It's not his property. He forfeited his property because he was convicted.
Taxpayer's property. Citizens. I'm sorry, citizens, I always use the taxpayer.
It's our, yes, sir. It's your property, county's property, and it had not been on the market for over 10 years, I would tend to agree.
So there is a potential for, if the person who's purchasing it to build something to add to the tax rolls, even though it's just a big piece of land, so the taxes on it are pretty minimal right now anyway, given that's just 1.4 acres. But if the person has an interest in building, which it's a sizable piece of property, it could increase the value considerably for that person and add to the tax rolls.
Yes, sir, it could, even though if it's undeveloped and it's owned by a taxpayer, they would pay taxes. The county owns it, nobody pays taxes on it. So if it's owned and/or developed, then certainly they would pay taxes attributable to its ownership and development.
So it's a B1 property, though, so business can go in there potentially? B1?
No, it's parcel B1. I'm sorry, Ms. Bazani.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Parcel B1. I'm not sure what the zoning district is. It's probably residential.
Okay.
But that was my, I apologize, I misspoke.
It's zoned SF1.
SF1.
Yes. Largely landlocked. I'm sure there's a right of way somewhere on the properties that border it somewhere.
Mr. Bazani.
One more question. So I thought there was a recent Supreme Court, either the Supreme Court or State Supreme Court, that said that the county, if they sold it, they would have to provide any proceeds left to the original property owner. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
There is a, there is a state code section that requires that if a property is delinquent in its tax assessments, that you can put that property up for sale and then sell it for the tax proceeds, and if there's any excess, it goes back to the original owner. That's not.
We don't have that situation here.
No, this is a convicted criminal who mistreated animals, who we had to expend more than $40,000 to treat. That's why he forfeited his property. It's different.
So, Mr. Gibson.
Move adoption of the resolution on page 64.
Second.
Ms. Steele.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Nope.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
No.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
And Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. It's a resolution to approve fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 performance contract and operating budget for the Middle Peninsula Northern Act Community Services Board.
It's a pretty intimidating sign there, just seeing. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to touch. That's, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hudson and members of the board. First of all, I appreciate your time this evening. I'm here to talk about the performance contract. Before I get to that, I do want to recognize Gloucester's appointment to our Board of Directors, Antoinette Stokes. She is a highly engaged board member, and any of you who know Antoinette know that probably anything she does, she's highly engaged in, and she's presently serving as a co-chair of our Board of Directors. She was unable to attend tonight because she had some previous commitments that she was not able to change. So the performance contract surfaces every two years, and it is an agreement between the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, the local CSB, and each of the localities we serve. It outlines our finances and guides our services. This year's contract is for the next two years, fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. The state funding, as you probably are aware, only provides 90% of the revenue while the localities are expected to supply the 10%. But remember, the state funding is only part of our budget. We have federal funds and we have some billing funds that we also receive. So I'm here today to request that the board sign the resolution approving the performance contract. As I said, it's broken out into financial and service, and you've been provided only the financial component. The service component is about three to four inches thick and really guides how we do services. For example, it'll tell us how we are supposed to use federal funding, how we're supposed to serve not guilty by reason of insanity individuals, and things like that, that generally aren't really pertinent to things that the Board of Supervisors addresses. As you probably have seen in the information I've sent out, it's broken into three different program areas: behavioral health or mental health, substance use disorder, and developmental services. Each of these, but there's very, three distinct budgets for each of these. But our performance contract does not include early intervention services known as RISP. That is an entirely different program, totally, not totally federal-funded, but that's a program that serves children with disabilities or developmental delays through age two. This year, we did provide a pie chart that outlines the finances for each of the three areas that I spoke about. So are there any questions on that? I would also like to, if you have time, so I can update you with some of our services while I'm here before you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to highlight our psychosocial program, Charter House, which is located in Tapahannock. This continues to be a dynamic and very robust program for individuals who are diagnosed with a serious mental illness. I would hold up our program against any other in the state of the 40 CSBs. I'd like you to think about if you were aged maybe 18 to 30, and you were diagnosed with a serious mental illness, schizophrenia, bipolar. 25 years ago, you would be told, "Your life is over as you knew it. Go home, don't stress yourself, take medications as prescribed, and come see the doctor every time he tells you to come." That's the end of your life. Today, that's no longer true. Individuals who have a serious mental illness are able to do many, many things that 25, 30 years ago, they thought they could not. And it's because of this clubhouse program where officer community, for individuals who are diagnosed with such a mental illness, behavioral disorder, that they have community, people that are like them, that they, we all need community. We all need to be able to have worth. 25 years ago, these individuals were basically told to have no worth in this world. Now they have that, and this program also provides job opportunities for them. So there is recovery for individuals who are diagnosed with a mental illness, and it's because of this program. A couple other things I wanted to share with you is actually a challenge, is our 40% employee vacancy rate right now. That's a serious, significant problem in being able to offer services to our community as we would like. And that unfortunately affects our counseling center at Gloucester and our counseling center in Tapahannock, Essex Counseling Center, because we don't have full-time staff to do the comprehensive needs assessment, which is the foot in the door for services. We have other full-time staff that are providing that service, kind of we fit it in their schedules. So we should have two positions in each of the clinics to do that, and we have no full-time person doing that now. So we're not able to offer the services that we would like to our community. So the other one is our mobile crisis. We have, although we've been advertising for two years, we have two people to do mobile crisis for 10 counties. Obviously, that's not possible. So those are two more critical areas that we have where our vacancy rate impacts our services to our community. Another, I would say, negative, a challenge, if you will, is our state hospitals, and I've said this every time I've been up here before you, over the last three years. The situation with our state hospitals is that there are no psychiatric beds available in facilities that were intended to serve our community. And when I say challenge, I mean people are sitting in the emergency rooms for several days possibly. It's been over a week. We've had a child who's been like three and four years old that has been in the emergency room here at Walter Reed for well over a week awaiting a bed. They're not getting treatment while they're there, and they're acting out. Can you imagine a three- or four-year-old that's sitting in an emergency room for a week? That, that's, in my opinion, that's, it's traumatizing the child.
No parent? No parent?
Well, the parents are with them, but you still have to be in the emergency room because the child has been determined to need hospitalization. And to do that at a state hospital, because they did not have their own insurance, you have to go through, you have to get a bed, and there aren't any beds. And this was during COVID, I do need to acknowledge that, but still, there's just no beds. There's one state facility for children. And we've had adults there that have been sitting there as well for well over a week awaiting a bed. And this has been a strain on certainly our law enforcement, who have to sit with them. When a detention order is ordered, they have to sit with them. And our local emergency services, because they have to continuously make phone calls to state hospitals, to private hospitals, to try to find a bed. So this morning, I may call 40 hospitals and be told to call again in the afternoon. I call 40 hospitals. To start over the next day to call 40 hospitals to see if there's a bed available. People have gone to school to get master's degree to call psychiatric hospitals to find a bed. This kind of, it may explain some of the reasons people don't want to work in community health. It's very challenging. And eastern states, our hospital of choice, and that is supposed to serve Gloucester County and in this Middle Peninsula area, has really become a forensic hospital, which means that they're serving individuals who are there because of criminal charges. Either they have to be restored to competency, or they've broken a law and are in jail and they need to go to the hospital, and they have a criminal charge against them. So they have two beds available for what they call the civil side. Other than that, they're all filled up by the criminal side of the people that need these services, and they can be there for lengthy periods of time. So, so not that I leave in with a negative Nancy appearance, I do want to talk about our CIT program, which is very robust again. It's here located in Gloucester, adjacent to the Wall Street Hospital, and it does allow people who are being detained to go to a psychiatric hospital, if there aren't any medical challenges, to go there, so that law enforcement would take them to the CIT site, transfer custody. So therefore, there's a law enforcement officer there that would take custody of the individual, allowing your law enforcement officer to go back to their job and not have to sit with them. And actually, since it's in Gloucester, it has served, saved seven hours' time for Gloucester deputies since January. So that's been a very positive program. The second prong of that program is training. We have a 40-hour training of how to approach people who might have a mental illness. We know there have been some deaths. We know that there's been one very, there's been legislation from it, from the one in Richmond, where someone dies, because sometimes people don't know how to approach it, or the situation is such you can't approach them and you have to maintain the safety. So that's a 40-hour program that's been very popular. We've had a lot of law enforcement say this is better than any other training they've had. So with that said, I'm open for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Bazani.
So do HIPAA laws cover these individuals who might find, who might be deemed to be a danger to not only to themselves but to society? Because we have a lot of issues nowadays going all over the country with shootings and things like that. How are citizens protected from individuals like this if they don't, this individual doesn't go out in the public and decide he wants to change his mind?
I can speak for, I'll speak very narrowly about the laws in Virginia. When there is a, trying to find hospital beds and someone's being detained, HIPAA does not apply that, and you have hospital-to-hospital transfer, and there are some federal laws surrounding that. Now, are you saying if someone eloped from the, from Walter Reed Hospital and left, even though they won a detention order and for some reason they eloped from the hospital, is that what you're asking?
I don't want to go too deeply, but what if they've made a comment that, you know, "I want to do something"? What does your organization do then?
Well, we would, if you called us, we would then ask more questions. Do they have a mental illness? That's the first piece you have to get. If they don't have a mental illness, then it's more of a criminal matter. But if it's a mental illness, or you think it might be a mental illness, or there's a past mental illness, that's certainly something then that we can, is what they call a emergency custody. that's certainly something then that we can, is what they call a emergency custody order, that you bring them in to evaluate them. And that's against, that's really against their will, so to speak. They don't volunteer to do that. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Any more questions? There's a resolution on page 81 to approve the performance contract.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Steel, we call Paul the board.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is financing options for utilities, advanced metering, infrastructure. Ms. Steel and Mr. Cole.
Yes, so Mr. Cole is here to help tonight to present three different options for the board to consider so that we can move forward with the AMI project. And we introduced the subject before, and tonight's the sort of decision time. And there's three different resolutions that are there for you to consider. And he has the latest and hottest information or figures off the press. So I'm going to turn it over to him as he's passing those documents out.
Bring the big guns with him, the nineties here by himself.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Bazani.
False sense of security, maybe.
Thank you.
This is a supplement to what you all received in your packet.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Ms. Steel. The AMI program, these are, these are, again, would be considered smart meters again, right? I was going to have an organization come down from DC to talk to us about smart meters, but we decided, Chair and I decided we would do a town hall. Has there been any progress on when we can do this town hall in the month of September or early October?
I think it's going to end up having.
It's going to be early October.
But we will do it, right?
We still have to, yes, we still have to get a date confirmed and a location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. This is a follow-on to a conversation we had in early August about financing for this project. And since that time, we've worked with staff to bring you these options. So I'm talking off of page two, the bottom right corner is where the page numbers are. The cost of this project is, at this point, I think, pretty firm at approximately 3.4 million. We did a request for proposal to a number of banks, asking for funding for what is basically a 10-year term. We determined with staff that that was an appropriate term over which to amortize this loan. And we asked the banks for two different options. The first would be a water and sewer revenue bond, where the loan with the bank would be secured by the revenues of the water and sewer system as opposed to any asset or a mortgage. And you all have issued that type of debt before. The last time you did that was in 2016. We subsequently refinanced that loan in 2021. So technically, you have no revenue bonds outstanding today, but that doesn't preclude you from issuing a revenue bond if you determine you would want to. So that's an option. The second option that we asked the banks for is an equipment lease. Just secure the loan with the asset, which is a fairly typical way to do it. So it's not a pledge of revenues. It's subject to annual appropriation by you all, and it's secured by the asset. In theory, they'd come and take the meters if you don't pay the debt service. That's with the banks. You go to page three. We received six different proposals. We've listed those banks alphabetically at the top of page three. Some of these you'll recognize, some you may not recognize. They're not household names necessarily, but they are all active in bidding on municipal loans. We deal with most all of them on a somewhat regular basis. So while you may not know who they are, they are pretty active in this local government lending. In addition to the banks, we also submitted an application to one of the state programs, which you all have used before, the Virginia Resources Authority. It's a pooled bond program. They sell bonds two to three times a year. They, they have a AAA rating by virtue of the Commonwealth's AAA rating, and they pool projects, get you financing, and you get your money. Through VRA, what, what the proposal was, was to secure this loan by the county's courthouse, which VRA already has a lien on by virtue of a loan we did with them in 2021. So we did a loan with VRA, you all did a loan with VRA in 2021, and the security for that loan was the courthouse. If we wanted to go through VRA again, we could secure the loan with the courthouse. So in other words, not bring more collateral to the table. There's enough value in the courthouse to secure both loans, the 2021s and what would be the 2023s, if you wanted to do that. I will tell you, if we go that route, because this is a 10-year loan, we would be extending the lien on the courthouse by about three years. In other words, if we, the 2021 loan ends three years earlier than what this loan would end. So that's not necessarily a problem, but it would extend the lien on the courthouse three years longer than it's currently encumbered. What we sent you in your packet was the rates and the comparison as of, I think it was August 18th. So we've got an update for you to see exactly where these different options stand on interest rates and debt service. Page four recaps the, the interest rates. We've highlighted Bank of America Public Capital Corp., BAPCC for short. They're at the top there. Their, their proposal was to secure the loan by the equipment. So put a lien on the, on the meters. With them, you could prepay the loan in whole on any payment date. We're proposing to pay twice a year. And you would have to pay a 2% penalty for the first half of the loan, and there would be no penalty to prepay for the second half of the loan. So technically, you could prepay it from, you know, year one on, but there would be a penalty for the first roughly five years. Their current rate under column E, which is, which is a rate that you could decide to pursue this evening, and you would, it would be locked in until a closing in October of, I'm going to round up slightly, a 3.95%. Column E there. JP Morgan was the best bank proposal for a revenue bond, where we're putting the lien on the, on the revenues of the water and sewer system. They gave three options, non-callable, meaning you cannot prepay it for the life of the loan. Their current rate over in column E is, for that is a 420. If you want the ability to prepay it after the first five years, the rate would be a 443. After the first seven years, the rate would be a 427. And again, these rates under column E are fixed, if you all choose to move forward with them, for a closing in October. So what we're going to get into is where is VRA today versus Bank of America versus JP Morgan? Okay? Little more detail on those three options on page five. As of today, the VRA, I'm looking under column B, would be a rate of a 326. The caveat there is that VRA will not sell those bonds until, until October. I'll give you the exact date here in a moment, October 25th. So we're talking about, you know, almost two months, a little less than two months, before VRA sells their bonds and the rate is locked. But the rate today would be a 326. Bank of America's rate is a 394. JP Morgan, depending on which option, 420 to a 443, somewhere in that range. So we've got higher rates from the banks, but they're locked in for a closing in October. We've got a lower current rate from VRA, but we've got, you know, 60 days plus or minus before we can lock that rate. The security under VRA would be the courthouse, no new collateral. B of A would be the equipment. JP Morgan would be the water and sewer revenues. You can see the prepayment provisions. For VRA, it'd be non-callable. The market that VRA sells into, the, the bonds are typically not callable or prepayable for the first 10 years. And since this is a 10-year loan, it would be non-callable.
Mr. Bazani?
You're saying the courthouse is being put up for collateral?
The courthouse currently serves as collateral on the 21 loan. If we wanted to go through VRA, we could add this loan without bringing more collateral.
And what happens if we default on this loan? What happens to the courthouse? They sell it and kick the judges out?
I think practically speaking, the first thing they would do is with VRA, they have state aid intercept powers. So they would intercept state funds that would come to Gloucester County for any range of purposes, and they would use it to pay the debt service.
So, so paying for the bonds would represent an expense or for the assets on the balance sheet? So this additional expense, does the county intend to recoup this cost? Do the individuals who have these meters in front of them, are they going to see their rates go up to pay for these meters going in? Because somebody's got to pay for them.
I would defer to staff on whether their rates increases or more efficient metering.
If we're going to pay a bond, somebody, for that expense, who's going to pay for that? The taxpayer, the water user is going to use and pay for that expense, or?
Presumably, it paid from the water and sewer fund.
But, but you're going to have to increase rates to pay for that expense. It's an additional expense. We did not, would not have occurred had we not put this system in, right? I'd like to know that.
If I, would you want to take it?
I don't mind.
So in the discussions we've had with the board before, the AMI meters are more accurate than the existing meters.
That's fine.
So in doing it, we assume right now that somewhere between 10 and 15% more revenue will be increased by this accurate meter reading. So we're not raising the rates. We're actually going to be able to judge better the amount of water people use and bill them for the proper amount of water used. Our meters are so old and they're mechanical that they don't read right. So these new ones are ultrasonic. They won't have that same problem. So we hope to have more accurate billing than we have today. We're not changing the rates. We're actually hoping to bring more money in by being more accurate in what we bill.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Line four, I'm still on page five. When any of these loans close, whichever decision you all might make, you would take all of the money at closing. You would be able to invest that money and earn interest on it while you're spending it. The default vehicle for that would be a program called Virginia SNAP, which all of these lenders would be fine with. As I said, on line five, VRA, we will not, we have their commitment. They've approved this loan at the VRA board level, but we would not be able to lock that rate until October 25th, and then the loan would close on November 15th. Whereas with the banks, if you decide to move forward with either bank, the rates that we're showing you above are fixed as long as you give your approval this evening, and they could be closed in October, as I said. So we could close a bit earlier.
Mr. Bazani?
I'm going to go along the same line of questions. So are you telling me, Mr. Baines especially, are you telling me, Mr. Baines, that the savings and revenues that are going to increase are going to more than offset the additional expense for paying these bonds? You've got, you've got an analysis that shows that?
No, sir. We have.
How, how are you making that statement then, if you don't have an analysis that shows that?
The company that we're working with has done this in multiple other places, and their analysis of previous communities is somewhere much higher than what we're holding them to. They feel they can bring in 15 to 17% more revenue. We're asking them to do it at 10%.
Have you, have you seen this analysis from them?
Yes.
Is that something you can share with the board?
No, I think we have. Over, over the time we did AMI, when we were up here for the CIP, we showed a lot of this analysis at that time. So it was a CIP project, and when we did, we brought all this information in. When y'all approved the CIP project, now we're just trying to find a way to fund it. So the CIP project was discussed back last December, maybe? I can't remember when, but, but yes, sir. We, we've looked at it with the companies, there were multiple companies. Out of those, we chose one to move forward with. They all had different types of contracts we could address, and this company was the one that we felt, when we explained to the board, met our needs the best out of all the different companies.
And you expect to see labor savings from individuals not having to check meters?
We expect to be able to better perform the maintenance we need to on our system. Yes, sir.
Are you reducing the number of FTEs that are required to do?
No, sir.
You are not doing that. So you're not saving anything on labor then?
No, sir. We didn't allow them to use that as part of their analysis. They tried to use labor savings. We would not because of the, the reduced maintenance we've been able to do over the years. So we need to keep the people to maintain the system. Yes, sir.
Line six, other fees and expenses. VRA has some program fees. That's built into the analysis that you'll see on page six. Bank of America has no fees associated with their loan. JP Morgan would pass along fees for their attorneys in the range of 15,000 to 20,000. That will be included in the comparison. Credit approval, we are approved from VRA. We got that commitment today. Both banks have basically approved it from a credit, but it's got to be documented, pretty standard approvals going forward. And then finally, line eight, who would represent the lender? VRA would use McGuire Woods. JP Morgan would use a firm called Cutac Rock. And Bank of America, to be determined, but they often use McGuire Woods. In, at any event, using an attorney or a counsel that is well-versed in local government finance. So when you go to page six, the right-hand side of the page gives you sort of all the details. VRA is under column B, and remember, that would be secured under this scenario by the courthouse. It would be non-callable, and it would close in November. Highlighted on line seven is the current interest rate. We measure that under a single interest rate called a true interest cost, TIC. It was a 326, but we can't lock that one until 1025. Bank of America rounding up 395, JP Morgan a 420. In all of these scenarios, we are delivering on line 14, when the bond closes or the loan closes, 3.4 million for the project, and we're adding cost of issuance. We've got an estimate in there. I don't suspect it'll be that high, but we're adding cost of issuance for each option so that you see the full effect in the annual payments, which we've shown on a fiscal year basis down below, fiscal '24 through '34. You can see what the annual payments are for each option, what the total payment is, principal plus interest on line 31. VRA has the lowest rate, so we're comparing the other two to VRA on line 32. So in other words, based on the VRA estimate, and it's a very accurate estimate, Bank of America, you would pay an extra $104,000 over the life of the loan if we actually locked in VRA at that 326 rate. And then the very bottom, line 33 in blue, it's called the break-even rate. We are measuring there between now and October 25th. How many basis points, one one-hundredths of an interest rate of 1%, could VRA rates go higher before they match the bank? So in other words, to match Bank of America, the VRA rate would have to go up by 48 basis points or 0.48%, call it a half a percent. And then remember, that's between now and October 25th. That's a pretty significant move, but not unprecedented. We've seen that kind of move in the municipal market. So we're trying to give you a little bit of sense of, while VRA is a lower rate today, we've got, we got some risk between now and when we can lock that. And to match the Bank of America payments, VRA rates, if they go up by 48 basis points, they'd match. If they go higher, they, you'd pay more. JP Morgan, that break-even rate is almost double, 84 basis points, just under 1%. So it gives you an idea, if you were to decide to go forward with VRA, what kind of rate movement you could withstand before they would match the bank options. So under, under the VRA option, we, we need, if we want to move forward with VRA, we need to make a decision this evening to be in their pool. If you want to move forward with either bank, there is a resolution for that. The rates we've quoted are good, but you're not up against a deadline like what VRA does, because VRA has a schedule, and you're either in or you're out. With a bank, you kind of control the schedule. If you don't want to take action, they won't go away. They won't say we're no longer interested, but their rates won't, the rates would have to refresh.
Mr. Bazani?
So I, I enjoy situations where, you know, someone's putting a gun to our head and saying, you have to make a decision tonight or it all goes away. For the $39 million we may borrow as a result of the referendum in November, what, what collateral are we putting up for those bonds? Are we, are we doing it on the courthouse? Are we doing Main Street? Any buildings, one and two? What are we putting up for collateral for those bonds?
Well, for the referendum, if that is approved, it would be the general obligation pledge of the county. Well, for the referendum, if that is approved, it would be the general obligation pledge of the county, which is your full faith and credit, your taxing authority. So there would be no collateral associated with those bonds. The collateral is you have to legally raise taxes to pay the debt service. So there isn't an asset.
So that's why, that's why I think the referendum is dangerous, but so if, so if we don't make the payments on this thing, then we will have to raise taxes to make those payments as well, right?
We have, I mean.
Yes.
If you said you don't make the payment.
If we don't make the payments, then you would have to raise taxes to make those payments as well.
I think he's saying if the cost savings aren't enough to make the payments.
And since this is your utilities department, there's multiple ways you could increase the funding you needed to pay for this. It wouldn't just be a real estate tax increase. You could do rate increases, you could do other types of funding with different fees and such. So there's other ways to raise the funding if you didn't have it. But yeah, this isn't just a general real estate tax. This is more the utilities department and the rates you would have in the utilities.
It is an enterprise account, so there is, at this point, no obligation that would fall on the general taxpayer unless the board introduced that. If we were running short, we would come back and ask for a rate increase. But I think, you know, what, there is a whole lot of water that is unaccounted for. And that's why these companies are suggesting that we change our meters, and we know we need to. And we are going to definitely generate more revenue by having these meters because people are having meters that don't, that some of them don't even work at all, and we have to find out that they're not working. And so there's, there's no doubt that we're gonna generate more revenue. I also would never want to be misleading that we may not, we may have to raise rates for other reasons, not the meters, but for all the repair work that needs to be done on the whole system.
So, so we don't have, we don't have an analysis that shows that we will in fact get the fifty percent? Nor do we have, will we have an analysis that, what if we don't gain, what if we don't find the lost water? Maybe the water's not lost.
It has been studied, and we do have that, and we had three different companies and.
But what if the water's not lost? Who indicated us that we're losing water?
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta add something because when I first got on the utilities subcommittee.
Point of order though, my point is, we're doing things without an analysis of anything. They're just telling us, and we're supposed to believe it.
We do have some analysis because when I first got on the subcommittee, utility subcommittee, I distinctly remember Mr. Dawson presenting us with figures that showed the volume of water that was lost that could not be accounted for. I've never forgotten, Mr. Mitchell was on the committee at that time, and even he was shocked at the volume of water. And when you mentioned, measured the volume of water times the amount it costs to get the water to where it's potable, we were looking at millions of dollars lost over that time period. So those numbers are there. If we could reduce our loss by fifteen percent, it's the volume, and maybe Mr. Dawson or George can comment on the volume of water that we're looking at. When you look at a percent, it's the volume of water that has to be processed, the chemicals involved and all that, that we save money because of more accurate readings. And I think that it's unfortunate, but I think that being on the utilities committee, I've learned a lot about, you know, the losses of water, where some people not paying water, some people stealing water. There's so many things that I think by having these meters and being, and having the people that we have now, being able to do other things and fix broken lines, I think we're gonna save a lot more than what is anticipated that will pay for these.
And before Mr. Dawson gets into any of the technology, I just wanna say that we have looked at the analysis over and over again, and we took a more conservative approach than these companies because these, they're trying to sell you something, and they're gonna say, "Oh, you're gonna make so much money." We took a much more conservative approach to be more confident, but I.
And every time there's a line break, that's water that's being wasted, that has been processed and paid for. So for example, when those people broke the hydrant on the road in front of the Mexican restaurant, I'm not sure whether we charged the insurance company for the amount of water lost by that thing. And then we got the break in Burley Road that we're hoping to get fixed. The amount of loss there, we fixed that, we're saving an enormous amount of money by controlling for these leaks once we get these meters in. And that's, when you ask about personnel, the personnel will be able to tackle a lot of these leak issues that continue to happen.
So we have empirical data that shows these losses of water?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. Annually, we're averaging about twenty-eight percent non-meter, non-revenue water.
It's significant, and as I said, having been on the subcommittee for this many years, I have been just shocked at the data that Mr. Dawson has presented to us about these losses. And, you know, there are people that, you know, go to these hydrants and take water without the right meters. There are cases where people are using water and not being charged for it. I think that a little more effort to control some of these sources, I think we're gonna be much better off. And having these meters will make a big difference, I think, in the way utilities are run.
Mr. Crisco.
So my question to the two gentlemen currently at the podium, do, does that twenty-eight percent of non-revenue loss of water, does, will that equate to four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year if it's captured?
If you captured all of it, sure, absolutely. We don't think we're gonna capture all of it, but we think what we are gonna capture will be very close to that. And that's what we're hoping for. You could talk, talk to some of these salespeople, they tell you we get a half million dollars a year in this. We're not looking at that, we're looking at what we would get with ten percent revenue increase, so that gets us closer to that four forty. And then on top of that, it's, I mean, we've been talking about the meters a lot tonight, but the things that we'll get from the technology, the billing we're able to do for the citizens, the portal they'll have so they can actually see their own water and see what's going on, the alerts we can have when we get a leak, this is gonna improve our system so that we have a much higher, we have one that's really an expectation of the year 2000, not 2020, versus what we have today. We don't know about a leak until someone calls us, or out patching something, and you see it.
We read meters.
Yeah, when I walk along Main Street, when I see water bubbling up somewhere, the next day I send a picture because that's how we find out. If we've got these smart meters, they'll tell us when they see it running all night when someone should have it turned off. If we get a spike and all those things. So it's gonna be a much better system than we have today, it's not just the meter itself.
And one other thing.
My, my, my last comment was, I remember seeing this information. That information has been presented in the past. It would have been nice to have it re-presented tonight, especially with us having to make a deadline decision because at the end of the day, if this does not equate to between four hundred and sixteen thousand and four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, the money's gotta come from somewhere else. And that information is important to have when making these decisions. And while I know it's there, it would be nice to have seen it again tonight because I don't like making the deadline decisions with now all of the pertinent information to make that decision.
And I've gotta apologize. We're living it almost every day, so to us, it seems much more that we can recite it to you, you're right. You guys get to see it a couple times in previous board meetings. We probably should have brought some of it back up, but we are here tonight to answer any of those questions.
Mr. Bazani. So the meters are designed to, to measure water going from the meter to the house?
Correct.
So that's the only part you would measure? How would you know if there's water leakage before it gets to the meter? If you've got these AMI systems in, how do you know where you're leaking from? Unless you have these things put in in sequence somewhere that you can catch the water leakage?
The meters are, sense upstream and downstream pressure and are able to alert you when there is a consistent drop in down, in upstream pressure before it reaches the meter, which tells you, A, there was either a short-term peak usage such as a firefighting event, or two, there's a leak. So once you get that alert, you go out to investigate.
Okay, thank you.
And then of course, it also records hourly usage by the customer, and if it sees usage twenty-four hours a day, then it alerts us on the next reading cycle, the next, you know, day that, to investigate that, with that customer for a possible leak.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mr. Baines, I don't think you need to apologize because we have been discussing this for a year. We have had multiple presentations on this technology. The consensus of the board, as I recall, was that we were gonna move forward with this technology. The technology's a good technology. It improves customer service, it helps you identify leakages quicker, it helps customers identify their billing situation more easily, it captures more revenue. And the biggest benefit to this program, as I understand from the multiple times we've talked about it, is that your staff is not gonna have to be out there reading meters as much. This will greatly cut down on staff time, and so all these leaks and pipe fix, pipe problems that we need to fix and seal up, it frees up all of these employees to address those leaks. And so again, that's going to greatly improve our customer service and, and capture that water so that these leaks aren't happening. So I, I, I'm confused why there's this sense on some members of the board that this is some sort of rush job because we've, we've been discussing this for a long time. I think the issue tonight is the financing. And I'd be interested to hear others' thoughts on the financing options. I lean towards the Bank of America proposal for a couple of reasons. We can secure the funding more quickly, it is secured by the equipment and not the courthouse, which is very important to me. It would not extend the lien on the courthouse for another three years, which I think is a benefit. It has the lowest interest rate of the banks. And the biggest benefit of the bank option is you can prepay it. So if our financial situation improves, then we can prepay it, and we can potentially save up to six hundred thousand dollars if we were to get an influx of funds and we could pay off this loan. Whereas the VRA, we are stuck with this loan for ten years, we cannot repay it. So I think the technology is good, I think we should move forward with this. And unless there's a clear reason otherwise that folks want to offer, I would lean towards the Bank of America option. Thank you.
Mr. Crisco.
And I would, I would tend to agree with the, to me, it gives the better, better options on, on the use of our money. With that said, I'm not sure which one of the three.
Well, that's what, it's, the one, the Bank of America is one thirty-nine, the JP Morgan is one forty-two, and the VRA is one forty-six.
Perfect. I'll, I'll make that motion. Is it one, one thirty-nine?
One thirty-nine.
Is that what you told me? Okay, one thirty-nine. I'll make that motion.
That's the closest I could come to figuring it out. No names in the daggone thing.
That's what I thought too, but I didn't wanna do it wrong and then get yelled at by our attorney.
Any more questions? We'll probably still get, at least we'll get yelled at by a real attorney. Miss Steel, any more questions for Mr. Cole, Miss Steel, Mr. Baines, Mr. Dawson? All right, Miss Steel, will you hold the board?
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
No.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orff?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Miss Steel, once we have these, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Once we get these meters installed, can we ask the utilities department to provide us with information as soon as they start installing to see how we do in terms of saving water? Because I think it might ameliorate some of the concerns the board has. And of course, I think we wanna know, you know, we really wanna know where the losses are.
Just to be clear, as we move forward this, once you've done the financing and we get through Mr. Wilmot, the actual contract, the first part of it is just that, it's a pilot where they go out and they start pulling meters and testing them so we start to know right away where we feel that we are. So that's the first thing they do, they don't go out and do this one neighborhood, they'll go out and test all the different sized meters to see what type of increase we're getting. Then they'll have a plan on where they start and how they go through the gap.
And when that happens, I know, again, you live a day in, day out, you know, as maybe, as part of your weekly report. If we can get that information, I hate to add more to you, but again, there are obviously questions that some of the members of the board have regarding the financing and whether we're gonna be able to pay for it. So, you know, it would be good to have that knowledge firsthand.
And again, I'm standing up here, but Mr. Dawson's the guy who's actually made all this happen, and in doing it, he also knows where the leaks are every week and the things they do, and keeps us informed of them. We'll make sure we get information that does let y'all know how well it seems to be going from the beginning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hedrick.
George, one more quick question.
Yes, sir.
Burley Road.
Yes, sir.
Is that still leaking?
Absolutely. Is it still bubbling up?
Could you give us an update of the leak?
Yes, sir, we heard from the contractor today that on September the eighteenth and the nineteenth, they're going to install the insert valves on Short Lane and on George Washington Highway so that we can shrink the size of the water system that has to be isolated in order to make that repair. And then once those valves are inserted, they will then schedule the work to actually make the, to shut the road down and make the repair.
So it's two steps, we have to isolate the leak, and then we get to go in and try to fix the leak. So this one isolates it, so we could cut that piece of the pipe out.
So, any feel for how much water we're losing as a portion of that twenty-eight percent we spoke about?
That twenty-eight was before we had this leak. I probably wanna start calculating how much with this leak, that was on the last couple of years.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is contributing to that number staying there despite our efforts to fix leaks as we find them, as well as replace meters that have stopped working. We're hampered in the effort to replace meters by the fact that, you know, we order a hundred meters, and it takes us six months to get those hundred meters, and we get them in twenty-five at a time. So it's, that's slowing us down, and we have to keep some for new construction. You know, when Main Street landing was going on, you know, they were hitting us for, you know, ten, fifteen meters a month. So that was a real, real issue there. But that's, if it wasn't for the efforts that we've been making in fixing leaks and replacing non-working meters, that number would be steadily climbing. We'd probably be looking at more like thirty-five percent non-meter, non-revenue water today.
This is a big leak, and we hope when we fix it, we'll start to see our numbers go down.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more point, with regard to the preparation for that, when you actually get ready to do the major find of the leak, you're gonna have to shut down part of seventeen, right? You're gonna have to have, I think guys are planning to do that at night.
I think you're actually closing Burley Road, aren't you?
Yes, sir, we'll have to close Burley Road completely, and we'll have to close the southbound, outside southbound lane of George Washington Highway, yes.
And I think you told the board before, if we don't fix it and we have a disaster, it's a major disaster, correct?
It will be because that is the only way we have to move waters south beyond the courthouse area.
If we get somebody who'd be willing to go there, we'd fix it tomorrow, absolutely.
I think the board needs to know that you've had bids out, and a lot of people don't even wanna touch it, correct?
We, we actually worked through a state group that does what's called job order contracting, where we retained the services of this contractor who had been retained by the state of Virginia, and then they went out to find contractors. And the first person that they found, I mean, we signed a contract with the state's representative, they, they indicated they had a contract with this company. When they went to get the contractor to sign that formal agreement, the contractor backed off and said, "No, we're not gonna do it." And the real delay has been trying to find, for them to find somebody that will actually come and do the work. And we're back to the same contractor again, as we were, as we started with.
We'll see.
All right, don't run off too far.
I'm not.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the renewal of a permanent pump and haul agreement with, among Gloucester County, Matheson Oyster, and South Bay Company. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Miss Steel, Mr. Wilmot. It's a pleasure to come in front of you this evening. This has been a, and it's, it's a pleasure because this has been a successful effort between the Gloucester County and a private business to be successful. And they have been so successful that they want to renew this permanent pump and haul agreement for another two-year term. We've worked through the health department, and everyone is very comfortable with their past performance and more than willing to renew it. So we request that you approve the resolution on page one six hundred and sixty-one, authorizing the county administrator to renew the pump and haul agreement.
Motion to approve, Mr. Decker.
Any questions? Why is it a permanent pump and haul if we have to keep renewing it?
The permanent aspect is that I have determined in my infinite wisdom that there is no other solution for them to have sewer service to their property. Yeah, why is it permanent? I guess, I said.
The technology could change.
You, I guess, there is technology out there, you could, you could incinerate something or.
It's not that, I mean, why isn't it semi-permanent or biennial?
You'd have to talk to the State Department of Health about that issue. This is their, this is their term.
We'll leave that alone. Ms. Steel.
Mr. Hedrick?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Ohr?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We'll move to a discussion on a request for use of the old county landfill. Mr. Baines.
Good evening. So, um, as the board's aware that, you know, the closed landfill, I'm one of the people responsible helping maintain that. In doing it, we've had a, uh, the local area modelers association has asked to be able to use it to fly planes. They used to be out there next to Brent and Becky's, but that piece of property is now one of the facilities that's becoming one of the solar facilities. I've got one of the members of the club with me, Mr. Stover, if you have any questions on what they do. Right now, uh, most of their, their plane, well, all their plane flights are on Sundays. They have a small club, but they're a very strong club. They've been out there so far this year. They've been mowing a piece of it to make sure they had a piece that was flat and not rutted so that if they needed to, they could fly planes whenever y'all approve it. Uh, we had to give them a, a letter so they could become chartered. So they're a chartered club now. With your head nod, we'll work on an MOA or an MOU with, uh, Mr. Wilmot to allow them to fly out there. And if you have any questions, Mr. Stover's here.
Mr. Bizani.
So, so, um, what protections do we have since we know the landfill emits methane?
Right.
Which is not a healthy gas.
Right.
To be breathing. So what, what protections do we have as far as liabilities from them not coming out and suing us for someone getting sick?
We have checked with DEQ and our landfill is within the, the state regulations for methane emissions so that they're okay with that. Uh, Mr. Wilmot will make sure we have a contract that leaves us as, how do you say it, Mr. Wilmot, as less liable as possible or somewhere along those lines? Okay? So he'll, he'll work it out to make sure, and we want to also make sure, because they're flying radio-controlled planes, that anything that does happen where one of them sails down and smashes into something, that it's their responsibility and not ours to repair or replace whatever.
That's a stupid question, but is there a possibility that a spark from one of these planes can light off the methane coming out of the ground?
No, sir. The, 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 our gases, so that's one of the things we have to monitor and if it ever got to the point where it was explosive, we've got to go shut things down. Uh, the stuff they have out there is so mild, it wouldn't be, and you've been out there for, uh, part of the summer. Uh, him and several of his friends cut the grass for an area to make sure they know what it would look like. And you haven't had any problems with any type of gas, anything while you're out there?
Absolutely, no.
None? Okay, thank you. And again, we, they'll fly and land where the actual cells are, but we made sure they're parking and where they maintain their planes and everything is on a piece of the landfill that was never used for actual, uh, burying of trash so that they know where everything's going to be.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Baines, how often are those gases checked?
Uh, when, when we were, uh, it depends. Right now it's quarterly. So we, we go out quarterly, but I mean, we go out monthly. So we go out monthly, but for the state, we have to report quarterly. So four times a year we report it. We go by and every month we test to make sure if we have higher numbers, then we have to go out even more often. So it just depends on the time of year and if we see any gas, but the, uh, the last six months of us adding some additional, uh, gas collection wells, we're, we're well within, uh, I mean, we actually been at zeros for quite some time now. So that's been really nice because we were running up near the 4% that was where you have to notify the state. So when I first got back into this job, we were notifying the state every time we went out and took, uh, numbers because it was at 4%. But now we're back down to zero because of maintaining the systems that are out there.
So if you just, hi, again, you call them up and say, hey, guys, we can't do it.
Yes, sir. We, we have a landfill remediation plan that has rules in there that tells me if I get a certain percentage, I got to notify everybody within 1,000 feet and we got to do all types of other things. So yeah, there's, there's a plan in place that if we had a methane issue.
And all of that will be put into MOA, Mr. Wilmot? Pretty much, yes, sir. Okay, thank you. And it'll come back to the board. It was my idea that it should come to the board for approval. I had some significant concerns with reference to utilization of an old landfill for any purpose at all. So although this one may be appropriate, but I also suggested the sheriff be contacted and I assume he'll be in the loop.
Yep.
But there'll be an indemnity clause, an insurance clause, a, a, a we revoke it at our will clause, uh, everything I could possibly put in that agreement to make sure that this isn't just a fly-by-night organization.
A fly-by, yeah. Oh, oh, boom.
It's a good one.
Yeah, he was, he was.
All week?
All right. I think.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Callaway, request for fiscal year 2024 additional and carryover appropriations.
It's the most important paper in the building right there. She's throwing it on the floor.
I know. It's very insane. Good evening.
Good evening.
For your consideration tonight, we just have a, uh, one new appropriation. So this begins on page 160 of your board packet. Um, the first appropriation that we're requesting is for $229,000 for an ARPA sub grant that the sheriff was awarded. Um, he has a whole plan of how to use this and it will be used for equipment. Um, and then we also have some adjustments as well as carryover appropriations to the budgets for mainly school projects. Um, those are listed out. You can see there is one large one I'll bring attention to. And what that is, is where we estimated an amount to be included in the current year budget and then the spending happened and the project progressed a little more quickly and that money was spent in fiscal year 23, didn't require us to carry it over. So we're just reducing that budget to align them with spending. So I'm happy to answer any questions and there is a resolution on page 171.
Any questions for Ms. Callaway?
Does this include fish report? We have adoption of the resolution on page 171.
Ms. Steel, will you hold the board?
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Ohr?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Carries?
Is everybody good? Mr. Wright, opioid settlement funds preliminary expenditure recommendations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen of the board. I'm happy to be back here finally to talk about the opioid settlement funds. Uh, before I get started, I wanted to give some kudos to Mr. Quentin Shepherd, who has been an integral part of a lot of the analysis that we've been doing, um, and has really helped me kind of formulate this plan that you'll see tonight. So before we get started to Mr. Crisco's point, I wanted to go back a little bit. It's been about seven months since I last spoke to you about this, so I wanted to kind of level set the knowledge and give you a little bit of background as well. So obviously, the Jansen settlement was executed in 2022. And in the interim, the drug crisis has continued to worsen. And actually, 2022, according to the Virginia Department of Health, was the worst year on record for overdoses. We had almost 110,000 overdose deaths nationwide. Roughly 83,000 of those were attributable to opioids. So about 80% of this is attributable to the opioid crisis. Since January 1 of this year, there have been 24 suspected overdoses in Gloucester alone. Narcan was administered at 15 of those. The representatives from VDH assume that this is dramatically underestimated. These are the ones that have been documented. They're certain and I'm certain that there are many that go permanently undocumented and just happen in silence. In addition, um, as you can see from this chart, in 1999, looking from then forward, the vast majority of the opioid-related deaths involved prescription opioids. And what happened beginning in 2015 is actually a lot of the drugs are being laced with fentanyl. Um, so that has increasingly become one of the main issues related to opioid deaths. So just again, to give you some of the background that we talked about, I think it was about six months ago. Um, the Jansen settlement, which was executed in 2022, obviously, this was an agreement between the Commonwealth and its cities and counties, as well as all the other states. It amounted to $26 billion nationwide. And that was with Johnson &amp; Johnson and three of its major distributors of opioids. 30% of the funds have been paid directly to city and counties through direct distribution. 15% were paid to the Commonwealth so they could incorporate into different programming to abate opioid use disorder. And then the remaining 55% has been held by the opioid abatement authority for further distribution to cities, counties, and state agencies. That money is, a big portion of that money is already dedicated to the individual localities based on a formula. But we still have to go to them and say, here's how we intend to utilize these funds, which is the purpose of this presentation tonight, to let you know what our proposed plan is. But that, those funds are dedicated to us. And then, of course, included in that 55%, there's another percentage that is available for different kinds of grants, especially collaborative grants between localities and some other fund, administrative funding as well for the OAA. You've seen this one before, but I wanted to bring it up again. So this is just the initial settlement, the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement. So we in Gloucester are looking at, uh, securing roughly $747,000 over the next 18 years. So total regional funds is just over 1.7 million. And obviously, as part of this, I've been working with four of the other five middle peninsula counties to talk about different ways that we can leverage this funding collectively, certainly with the intent being to have a bigger impact on the region. I don't know why it looks like that on this slide. The ones that are highlighted are the funds that we've already received through direct, direct distribution. Um, so we already have in our dedicated opioid abatement fund just under $145,000 that we can leverage. I also talked about this a little bit the last time, but it's come clearer into focus since then. Another roughly $20 billion in additional settlement this year. Um, and that was with the large retail distributors, particularly of oxycodone, uh, one of the main prescription opioids. So, and then again, that was with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. The OAA estimate, estimate for us specifically is that we're going to get an additional roughly half million dollars over the next 13 years. Yes, Mr. Bizani?
So isn't it interesting though, that these private companies are being penalized for this? When the FDA approved these drugs and doctors prescribed them, yet the distributors of the drugs, Walgreens and CBS, are the ones being punished? What happened to the government being punished? What happened to bureaucrats in the government that allowed these drugs to go out to the public? What did they do to them? Nothing. So they're going to penalize these private industries here. It could probably go out of business. CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart may shut down some stores because they can't afford, you know, making settlements. So they're penalized, but the people who prescribed and approved these drugs by the FDA, they go unscathed.
And I can only speculate, sir.
And so we're only going to get, what, 18, 20,000? What's that going to do to abate opioid drug use here in Gloucester County?
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
You said, I think that previous slide was 18,000 you've received so far, 18 to 29,000?
No, we've received 144,000.
140, yeah.
Distributors, what was that?
Distributors?
You put one more down.
Okay.
See the amount there?
That's 747 over 18 years.
747,000.
Over 18 years, so that's, okay.
That's before this additional money.
Exactly. And this one, all the highlighted ones are the one, direct distributions we've already received, which totals 144,500.
Thank you. I'll have questions later.
Okay. But to your point, sir, I, I can only speculate as to what precipitated the settlements themselves or what the attorneys related to this, these settlements decided. I mean.
They made a third, they made a third of the settlement go into their pocket.
Well, Mr. Bizani, if I may, Mr. Chair, you're a thousand percent correct. The federal government is not going to punish itself, although it should.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are essentially four funding streams that we can utilize for this. As I already indicated, there's direct funding that we get. Um, there's no application process tied to that. We just automatically get those funds. And that's the 144 we've already received. There's also set aside locality funding, which I talked about previously, which we do have to submit an application for. Um, but again, it's dedicated to us. We just have to demonstrate how we're going to utilize those funds. And then there's two other opportunities with that set aside, that 55% that the OAA has. We can go in with other localities and request cooperative grants, or we could also do planning grants. Um, and that's particularly for communities who have a limited amount of funds, don't have staff to dedicate to this work. Um, that's where I'm seeing a lot of people are, uh, coming together, different localities and requesting planning grants because they literally have no idea how to utilize the So in terms of minimum characteristics for project funding, what we're looking at internally is obviously we are legally bound to, uh, align with the requirements of the settlements. Uh, that's just something we have to do, which is fine. Um, and then, of course, including evidence-based or evidence-informed practices, the OAA, they will actually provide a 25% incentive if we recommend programming or propose programming that aligns with evidence-based or evidence-informed practices, which we wouldn't recommend anything that didn't have some kind of backing in terms of research. And then, of course, we have to present as part of our proposal how we're going to use the funds. We have to provide a detailed budget. Um, so that's something we're going to align with. And then, of course, we, we have to align and we want to align with your priorities for spending of the settlement funds. Talked a little bit about this as well the last time. Uh, you may recall, we had a public forum in December at the library in the community room, had nearly 35 folks who showed up and gave incredible feedback and, and, you know, the attendees, it ran the gamut from medical providers to therapeutic providers, families dealing with this, as well as addicts in full recovery. Um, so it was a really great discussion. And then we did a survey through Zen City as well, got an additional 40 respondents and great information through that, which aligned with what we were hearing at the public forum. And then we did several stakeholder engagement meetings. Uh, we had two meetings with, uh, CSB staff and leadership, social services, the sheriff was there, uh, private providers, the care clinic, as well as Virginia Department of Health, just to further align around what we were hearing from the public. And then Quentin and I actually had multiple meetings over a period of four to five months with area service providers, um, to get their sense of what services are needed out there, uh, what the gaps are for the, the citizens who are dealing with opioid use disorder. And those included CSB, American Addiction Treatment Center down in Hayes, uh, the Master Center, which is, uh, headquartered in Richmond, Chesapeake Counseling and Bacon Street. And then we also had a meeting between, uh, the school district, the school division, and CSB to brainstorm prevention and remediation opportunities within GHS specifically. And that's one of the things I'll talk about in the recommendations. So for the initial year plan, because we had a larger influx of funds for the first two years, we're looking at this honestly as a pilot project. Uh, we want to try different things, see which things work well, uh, have the biggest impact, and then leverage those going forward. Um, so as I indicate, pilot each of the initiatives recommended and then determine uh, how we want to fund the initiatives, if at all, for FY '25 and beyond. And then also leverage any remaining funds to implement and support regional initiatives. One of the things that the OAA does, if you're willing to essentially put some skin in the game and use your direct funds, you're much more likely to get a collaborative grant to show that you're actually willing to invest as well. So this is kind of the, the substance of the presentation and the part that we want to get your consent on. So looking at these just at a high level, the purpose of this and what we were kind of looking at from an initiative, potential initiative standpoint, is trying to deal with the addiction cycle across the spectrum. with the addiction cycle across the spectrum. So not just abatement and remediation, but also looking at what we can do from a prevention standpoint, particularly at the schools. So each of these recommendations reflect a piece of that spectrum. One of the things I'm most excited about is the first one, the school-based prevention and remediation. So as I indicated, we had met with CSB early on to talk about, you know, what opportunities are there to prevent, to bring a prevention specialist into the high school. The high school staff, the superintendent, were very on board with this. They feel like it's an increasing issue, particularly at the high school. A lot of the suspensions, I've been told, are related to some kind of substance use, particularly on school grounds. So they were really excited about this opportunity. Initially, given the funding that we have available, we were assuming it would be a part-time person at the high school. But then CSB actually let us know that they had received a grant from the Department of Juvenile Justice specifically to hire what they referred to as a qualified mental health professional to deal specifically with substance use disorder amongst the schools. So they indicated that they would be willing, that the position itself is about 64,800 a year, including fringe. So basically, we would provide 32,400 out of our opioid funds, and they would provide the other 32,400 from the DJJ grant. Yes, sir.
So are these going to be recurring funds coming in every year, or is this going to last for a year and then, or however long it's going to be?
No, the DJJ is multiple years.
Multiple years.
Yes.
So this, this person will then be funded for multiple years?
Yes, sir. So then, what we're able to do with this is it would actually be a full-time, CSB-provided, GHS-housed prevention and treatment specialist, which we, when we shared this plan again with Dr. Miggas at GHS, he was, to put it mildly, over the moon about the opportunities with this. And it would be prevention programming primarily at the middle school and high school, and then the treatment side of it would be ostensibly, if, if a student were caught using a particular substance, then in lieu of suspension or expulsion, they could do the treatment or the counseling through that in-house treatment and prevention specialist. That would be an opportunity. And it would be a whole-family approach, so it wouldn't just be the student, they would try to engage the family as well to deal with whatever issues are in the home. And of course, they would be leveraging evidence-based practice, whole-family practices for that. So that's the first one. The other two, four, and five are flexible. What I've listed here is actually the maximum cost if we did it to full capacity, so I'll go through that a little more for each of these. Another opportunity with CSB would be creating a mobile integrated health program. This is something that's already being done in Westmoreland County. Basically, what they're doing, I'm sorry, did you have some, oh, I thought you said some, sorry. In Westmoreland County, they're actually doing mobile integrated health, and what this entails is the peer support specialist learns about an overdose incident, and then when, within 72 hours, they'll actually go to the home or contact the person directly, and they'll bring either an EMT, a paramedic, or a nurse in to try to deal with any nascent health issues, if the person's in crisis. It's just, it's a much richer and broader and holistic care than the peer support specialists are able to provide currently. So that's something we're looking at as well. Talking with Virginia Department of Health, they actually have contracted nurses that they used heavily during COVID, who are not doing anything at this moment and want to be. And there was one nurse in particular who was really excited about this potential. It would be $50,000 a year for 20 hours per week for that contracted nurse, but there's nothing saying we would necessarily need to do 20 hours a week. If the need was only 10, we could do that, and the cost for the abatement funds would be 25,000. The other thing we, Quentin and I learned in our discussions is that, you know, there's essentially three big gaps to treatment. There's transportation, there's the money to be able to pay for it, and then there's just knowledge of the treatment itself. So one of the things, when we met with the CEO of the Master Center, she said, you know, if you can spend your money any way, make sure it's increasing access to knowledge about what programming is out there, particularly in the middle peninsula region. So one of the things we want to do and be good stewards and kind of lead the region on this is creating some kind of a comprehensive resource guide or website, probably both, using a small amount of the funds. And basically, what that would do is, as it indicates, create a central source of information for people and their families who are dealing with opioid use disorder, so they know what's available, what the contact information is, and how to access it. So that's something that we've heard again and again as a huge gap in the region. And one of the ways, and just to give you a little background on the regional side of this, I've actually met with four of the five middle peninsula counties several times now, just to talk about the different opportunities we have. And they were really excited about this, and they've all agreed, if we do this initially and create a certain number of guides and hand them out across the region, if they need additional ones, then they will provide their, their settlement funds as well to get those additional copies. So it's, it's a really easy way to collaborate regionally. The fourth one is increasing access to MOUD, which is medication for opioid use disorder, and MAT, which is medication-assisted treatment, typically what you hear about when you hear about methadone or suboxone treatment, or therapeutic counseling through expanded transportation options. So we've talked extensively with Bay Transit. They already have similar, similar frameworks in place with their infectious, with the infectious disease clinic. It's a, basically, it's an app-style, like an Uber or Lyft-style, appointment-driven ride process where a person will call, say, I have an appointment at the infectious disease clinic tomorrow at 11:30. They'll take them there, they'll wait for them, they'll take them home. And it would be something similar to that. And a lot of the issues we're trying to look at is obviously, you know, Mr. Brazani, as you indicated earlier, the potential HIPAA concerns with someone who's going to treatment. It's going to be fairly obvious that they're being dropped off at treatment, so doing something like the Express may not be ideal for someone who wants to maintain their privacy around this. So that, yes, sir.
So, Mr. Wright, going back to what we just said, that these different companies that are now going to have to make up those costs for the payouts they have to do for the lawsuit that happened, it, it seems to me that pharmacies and other companies sell other kinds of drugs that, that are addictive as well. So what this does is open up a can of worms for lawyers to go out there and sue these same companies, because you distributed this drug, which is addictive drug, and you killed my son or daughter. So it opens a whole can of worms, and the only people that benefit, and I'm sorry to say this, and not to dismerch these good attorneys here, are the lawyers, who will make one-third of the, of the settlement from each of these lawsuits that they, that they foist on these companies. So to me, you know, you've got, you've got to stop these drugs at the source. With fentanyl coming in from the southern border, it's no longer a drug prescription anymore, it's more fentanyl coming in through the streets. How, how is, how is Gloucester High School going to prevent someone from coming into schools with fentanyl pills and distributing those pills to students in the high school? How, how is this program going to prevent that from happening?
I would say, sir, that that-
It's not going to happen.
Not the intent of this.
Nothing will happen.
Yeah.
Nothing. The drugs are coming in, and there's, you know, the only way you can stop it is at the source. And no one wants to fix the border to keep these drugs from coming in our southern border, and it's coming into Gloucester County, and our poor children in the school system are being exposed to these fentanyl drugs, and they're being exposed to it. 32,000, $60,000 a year is not going to prevent these kids from getting their hands on a drug that can kill them. I'm stopping pontificating now.
Oh, Mr. Chair, but it will, Mr. Brazani, it will help the kid that has the issue. If you have a kid that has an issue, which I talked about the one that comes in and selling.
I agree.
They come in and sell it. This kid over here is the one that's hooked on it. This kid is the one that needs the, the counseling. So, I mean, that, that's why it's very important to have it in schools. I mean, you need that. You need somebody there for those kids that have these issues, and, and, and young kids that have these issues, and they don't know how serious they really are. I mean, they're serious, and, and I like the fact that you talked about the, getting the, the home, whole home involved, because that's where a lot of it starts. You'd be surprised how much started at home. So that, that's good. I mean, I would never knock anything that was going to help a child and keep a child from being addicted to any type of drug.
I didn't say knock, I didn't say not prevent treatment. What I'm saying is prevent the drugs from coming into the high school in the first place. For every kid that is addicted to a drug, there are 10 more out there that will receive that drug and get addicted as well. So it exponentially increases the number of people who need treatment.
Help as many as you can at a time.
Yeah. I agree with, I agree with you, but does, is the high school allowed to search lockers? Can they open up a locker and search?
They haven't used a locker in many a day.
They don't have lockers in the school system?
Lockers are the thing of the past.
Lockers are gone. I thought I saw a bunch of lockers locked in.
Well, you see them, but they're going soon.
You see them, but they don't use them.
Oh.
And most of them will be removed.
And they're, they're going soon.
I thought they were there. I mean, don't they search, are they allowed to search lockers? Mr. Wilmot, are they allowed to search lockers every day?
Yes, they are. And they can search book bags.
And book bags?
Yes, sir.
Without permission?
Well, permission from, they have the resource officers there.
From the student.
They tell them, hey, we have to search a bag. They do that.
Randomly?
Yes, not randomly, but if somebody's suspected of having something.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, these programs sound pretty impressive, and so these are programs that are for our region, right? You mean, Gloucester, but I know you're talking about regional cooperation.
Yeah, these, these specifically, sir, are the plan for Gloucester at this point.
And how do they mirror programs around the region? I mean, places like Newport News, Hampton, which may have even a more significant problem. Are you in touch with those people to see what works for them or what is working for them? Because they obviously are getting significantly more funds than we are.
Yeah.
And is there any level of cooperation between those communities to understand success and failures of different programs?
I'm not seeing the kind of regional collaboration that we're trying to do here, honestly, because for the reason you indicated, that they have a lot more money that they can use individually. And they also, you know, in some of their DSSs, they have folks who deal with addiction, whereas we don't. So I'm seeing a lot more, I don't want to say insular treatment of this, because they have more money, but not as much regional involvement and collaboration, because it's of necessity for us to do that kind of thing.
And there, the insurance that the money that we're getting and all communities are getting are supposedly dedicated to this particular program and can't be used for any other source, right?
Precisely. Yeah, there's actually, with the settlements, there's very strict constraints. Getting back to the, the transportation piece, so basically, if we did something that was individually requested, appointment-driven rides, the total cost, the total maximum potential cost would be 40,150. And that's basically, you know, the capacity Bay Transit would have is two rides per day, 365 days a year, and it's roughly $55 per ride. Now, there are other, there are other opportunities we could do. If someone could sign a waiver, they could do an express, and then we could just subsidize the express routes as well, which would be $2 instead of 55. But that would be on the individual client. There's several different ways we can do this. That 40,150 is the maximum if we did app-driven rides. The final one, subsidizing MOUD, again, medication for opioid use disorder for the most impoverished clients of the American Addiction Treatment Center down in Hayes. We had a meeting with them as well. Basically, it's $16 a day per dose for their suboxone treatment, which keeps them stable. If we covered five clients for 365 days, that's $29,200. Obviously, there's a number of ways we could do that one as well, if we wanted to, to spread the impact. We could do 10 clients at half-subsidized, there's a number of different ways. The total cost for all initiatives, if we funded all of these, to the maximum would be 156,750. So we, again, I, as I indicated, we have 144,000 that we've already received, and then roughly another 57,000 that the OAA is holding that we can request this year. Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Wright.
All right, Dr. Orth, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't, I thought you were done. Please, please finish, I'll wait till you're done.
All right, thank you, sir. To your point, Dr. Orth, about the regional collaboration, again, I've had a number of conversations with the, for the other five county administrators regarding this. We're looking at the possibilities of impacting jail programming, potentially subsidizing some of that. Hope Brooks, who is our probation and pretrial director, and I are going to be meeting with Judge Shaw soon to talk about the potentials of doing a drug court docket. It would probably only be maybe a half-day if it were to happen, but that's definitely in its nascent stages. Mobile integrated health, that's something, Dr. Orth, to your point, which we're piloting it here, and then it could potentially be scaled up across the middle peninsula and beyond, where CSB touches. CSB program enhancement beyond Gloucester with the peer support pieces. Again, they're kind of looking to us as the driver for this and wanting to see how things work for us, and then they can leverage that knowledge, because their funds are considerably less. And then same thing with Bay Transit. Once we do it, obviously, there's issues of scale inherently, that they can only do what they assume is two rides per day, so that's not, certainly not something they could do across the entire middle peninsula. But looking at potentially subsidizing that and getting more drivers, so other counties in the region could do that as well. And then the other thing we're looking at ultimately is, as I indicated, there's grant-based projects we could do between two or more middle peninsula counties. But again, they're kind of looking to us to be the leader on this and to figure these things out before they determine what they're able to do. So in terms of next steps, there's actually a motion listed on page 172 for your consideration. What I'm looking for and hoping for is approval for the recommended spending plan tonight. And then with that, I would complete the grant applications and proposals to submit to the OAA, the opioid abatement authority. The next cycle for them opens October 1st, and then if we submitted it before Thanksgiving, we would get the additional 24 and 23 funding by January, by the end of January. And then upon receipt of that funding, obviously, I would come back and, or Maria would come back and do a request for appropriation of the additional funds.
There's no resolution. There's just a motion.
No, I said a motion. Yeah, it's just a motion on 172.
To spend the money.
To approve the recommended spending plan.
All right. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright, what is our deadline to spend the $747,382? Do we have 50 years, 10 years, 20 years?
We would, well, ostensibly, we would have 19 years to spend it.
19 years?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're going to get a new infusion of funds each year.
Correct. I, I, I understand that, but currently, this is all that we have. So before us, you have a motion to spend 156, or requesting to spend $156,000.
Up to, yes, sir.
So that would tap all of our money up through 23 and 24. So then going forward, we would have about $40,000 a year from this settlement, which was all, all that we have known currently, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we would, if all the funds came in for this year that we have dedicated through FY '24, we would have just over $202,000.
Okay. My, my concern with moving forward with this is we're not going to get $157,000 again. So my, my issue is we're going to start all of these wonderful programs. They're going to go for a year, and then we're going to go, we got $40,000 plus whatever the next settlement is. I, I would, I would like to see us try to figure out a more reasonable spending plan so we're not starting something that then we can't fund with the money that's available.
Well, sir, as I indicated earlier, this is intended to be a pilot. That's why we're trying several different initiatives to see what works and what we can continue in the out-years. We're not intending necessarily to do all of these for the entirety of the period of the funding. We want to see what works, do it right, and then continue to fund what has the biggest impact. And that's why we wanted to try several different things in the first year.
It goes back to my earlier question. What if we don't have the funds to pay for this high school preventative person? They're just going to be there for a year, and then you're saying, sorry, we ran out of funds, and you're out of a job.
If that were the one we've selected, we would have the funds for the 18 years. We would be able to fund the 32,400.
Well, then, what are you asking us to do, to, to go forward with the plan for the 159,000? What are you asking us to do this?
Yes, sir. To approve the entirety of the recommended pilot plan for the first year.
It's for all pilots.
I can't do that. You got to pick one, tell us what you want.
Sir, with all due respect, we're not going to be able to determine what is the most impactful program if we only pick one. If it doesn't work, then the next year, we're in the same place, and we're going to have to try another one and try another one until we find one that works. That's why we wanted to do a pilot the first year and try five different initiatives.
Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brazani, I share your concern about the border, but we are not the federal government, unfortunately. You know, drugs are pouring across the border, human traffickers are pouring across the border. I'd love to solve that problem, but we don't have the jurisdiction to solve that problem. And what we have before us is a settlement, regardless of how it got here and how much the lawyers made and what your thoughts are on private businesses. We have this money, and we got to decide what to do with it. And I think there's been a very thorough process by Mr. Wright and Clinton, and thorough input from the community, through the town hall, through Zen City, and it's unquestionable there's a drug problem in our area. And let's spend the money that we have to address this critical problem while people are overdosing and dying. And I think these are all very reasonable recommendations. I think what I'm hearing is you've identified five or six options, you want to see what really gives us the most impact. You want to see what really gives us the most impact for each of these options, and then we can tailor the future spending on what is working the best. And so to me, working on drug provision in our high school, what better use of this money than that? And providing transportation to addicts who likely don't have a vehicle and don't have the money to go to treatment. I think these are all excellent recommendations. Even if we make this motion, I would like to make this motion to approve this at one fifty, one hundred and fifty-six thousand. We still have almost six hundred thousand dollars in money that's still coming our way. So it's not like we're going to be left bankrupt if we move forward with these recommendations. So I would move to appropriate these funds, move forward with this pilot program, and use these funds as recommended by Mr. Wright.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chair, if I could just remind, there's a whole lot more money at the state level that Steve was mentioning. And so if we are successful with some of these pilot programs beyond the level of what we have, the ability to go back and get more from the state, you know, when they kept fifty-five percent back, they are wanting more requests to come forward where there are success stories. So I think it would almost be a good problem to have, and I also think that trying to hit something hard and fast in the beginning, not only the ability to see what's sticking to the wall, but we're at a crisis right now, and we sure don't want to hold money back, you know, and think that five years from now, we might have, you know, we can save it up and do something. So I appreciate all the work that he's done in trying to identify when you're just starting with a complete blank sheet. And I think we are so far beyond where some of the other localities are because Steve has met with all these people and talked to all of them. So just don't forget, though, about additional funds that can come our way.
Mr. Bizani.
I agree with you, Mr. Gibson. We can't do nothing about the southern border, but we can do something about drugs coming into our county. That's where I was coming from, not, we can't do nothing about the southern border, and you know that. I'm just saying, let's keep the drugs coming into our high schools and our little middle schools. For every kid that becomes addicted to this kind of drug that's not prescription, it's fentanyl that comes in from the southern border, that's probably the primary source of these drugs, we have to find a way to prevent these kids from even using drugs. So, you know, do we, it's hard. It's a hard thing to do to keep these kids from using this drug. And do you search? Do you randomly do a random search for individuals coming into the high school and the middle school? You may have some parents might have issues with that. It's a difficult program. It's difficult to find who's using these drugs and where are they? That's my comment, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Gibson.
And I think that's the reason why Mr. Wright has proposed these different pilot projects, so that we learn very quickly what works. It may be that working with the high school is the most effective use of the money. But as Mr. Gibson said, there are addicts that have no access to transportation. Who knows? And if, as Ms. Steele says, that there's a lot more money, if we can show the state that we have success in certain areas, let's say maybe three of the four or two of the four, we might be able to go to the state for additional money to continue those programs. And other communities may be looking at us. I think the state is looking to find what works and what doesn't work. And certainly, working at the high school, middle school, and then you brought in the fact that hopefully we'll be working with the families, not just the students when we have these issues. And you're right, it starts at home. And sometimes even at home, these parents don't know what's going on. It's unfortunate.
We also have a lot of students whose parents are using, and they're having to deal with that.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes, no, I, this is a great presentation. My concern only stems from if any or all of these have any modicum of success, then next year, when we only get the forty, oh, and twenty-five, we're due another thirty-three thousand dollars. And because we are a rural community, and some of these larger urban communities will probably outcompete us for some of that fifty-five percent that they have held back, my concern is if there's more success than the thirty-three thousand dollars that we know we're going to have, that's my concern, because all of a sudden, we've helped these people for a year, but now because we are not qualifying for more money and hopefully some of the neighboring localities, we could pool some resources. But again, at the end of the day, my concern is we end up with one hundred and twenty thousand dollars less of resources that we have available. That's my only concern. That's why I brought that up. I don't have a problem with moving forward as this is deemed. I would like for the board to consider possibly, I don't even know what I want to consider because it's money that we shouldn't be having to spend. But that's the problem there. I think this is probably the best way to use it, but my concern is next year, when we have to decide what of these proposals, and I forget how many there are because I'm running.
Five.
There's five. Which of these five proposals, if we don't get any more money than the thirty-three thousand dollars that's owed to us, which ones do we then go, that's it, sorry, we can't offer that?
But here's the, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Wright. But if we sit there and five that are proposed by Mr. Wright are working and saving the citizens of the county, we'll probably have to figure out a way to get a hundred thousand dollars to help the rest, to continue helping them and not cut it off if they're successful. But if we find out that there's one or two that aren't successful, guess what? We're going to cut it out. But that's what Mr. Wright and staff is going to be there for. They're going to evaluate, they're going to look at what happens, and we'll see what happens. And if he comes up and of the five, only three of them are working, I would hope that Mr. Wright's going to come back next year and say, well, here's two other alternatives that are coming up, and let's see what these, what happens here. And if it's helping the citizens of the county, whether through their addiction or people that are coming in and creating other issues as a result of their addictions, it would be a worthwhile project.
Yeah, and just two other things I wanted to point out. The first one is there's that additional settlement that we're going to get another five hundred thousand over the next thirteen years. So that's additional funds that we'll be able to leverage going forward. And then Purdue Pharma, whatever's going to happen with that, it's six billion, but it's stuck in bankruptcy proceedings right now. So we do have that additional funds that we can leverage. The other side of this is we built these recommendations purposefully to have inherent flexibility. So if we can only serve three people with rides, you know, every other week, we can build that in. So that's why we did it the way we did, so we could have that inherent flexibility if we have less funding available to do it.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just, the final thing is that this is in the middle of the fiscal year, so you're going to see a proposed budget that'll be coming out next spring that doesn't really know what's working yet or not. So we want to kind of keep that in mind, too, that we're really looking at a two-year period.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Steele.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
As a result, as a result of Dr. Orth leaving, we're going to take about a five or 10-minute break.
[laughing]
Back to the board. Next item on the agenda is approval of the educational flyers upon the referendum. Ms. Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are eager to get out the educational materials, and it's going to take a little time to get them to the printer and get them back, and then get them out into the mail. And so we sent them out to you ahead of time, and they're in the board packet where the public's been able to look at them, too. And welcome any corrections, additions, or if you're comfortable with them, then, or it by consensus, however you would like to handle it. We would go forward with producing this as well as this entire same information on our website, which could become available immediately. And then we would also look at putting in meeting dates or other things that come about, capital improvement requests that tie to these, the background documentation, and we'll vet everything by the county attorney before it goes online.
So will this go out before early voting starts?
Yes, that's one of the reasons why we are eager to get it done now.
Okay.
There's just enough time.
May I, Mr. Chair? Mr. Gibson had a good question that he posed to me the other day. There's a state code section that prohibits a board or a city council from officially advocating or lobbying against passage of a referendum for this kind of venture. That, however, and that's true, so as a board and as an administration, we are constrained from either advocating passage of the referendum or lobbying in favor of its non-passage. Individually, each board member is allowed to advocate passage or non-passage of the referendum.
As a private citizen?
Well, as a board member, but you don't represent the board individually.
Right, okay.
So you, as a private citizen, Mr. Bizani, and as a board member, are free to advocate passage of the referendum or non-passage, as each of you are. So I wanted to make clear, although you are constrained as a board to not advocate either position, individually, you are free to advocate however you'd like. Administration, however, I'm sorry, you as a citizen, certainly, Ms. Steele, are allowed to advocate passage or not. But to represent the county as the county, my reading of that code section would prohibit us from doing that. Any questions?
So, yeah, so if I were to do something in my newsletter, that would be an individual action or?
Yes, sir, that's you individually, that's not the board.
Okay.
As long as you don't purport to represent the board.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So everyone came with the flyer that's worded?
Written.
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, under the link to the county website, I'm trying to find it here right in the middle of the.
In the middle of the black section there.
Yeah. It would be good if we had more specifics rather than just taking us to the gloucester.gov, but maybe a little more specific about where we could find the information on the bond referendum.
Okay, we can put in the backslashes to do that. We will also, on the front page of the home site, it'll be one of our hot buttons. So if somebody does land on just Gloucester County, it'll be one of the things, just like when we have information about storms or anything like that. So it'll be one of the highlighted areas of the front page.
Okay. Quinn's shaking his head so it can be done.
Yes.
I'm surprised he's not doing it right this second. Yes, sir. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think that the flyer or mailer looks excellent, and I certainly don't want to hold it up. Just a couple of quick comments. One, would it be possible to just bold the date of the election, November seventh, twenty twenty-three, just so people clearly know that? I know there's early voting, but just for people who tend to vote on Election Day, that would be important to bold November seventh, twenty twenty-three. I don't know if it would be helpful to put the hours of voting, or if that would be too much to add, but if there is a easy spot to put that, that may be helpful. On the public school section, where there's language to replace heating and air conditioning systems, do we want to specify how many schools that would apply to, or do we need a little bit more flexibility? I don't know.
I think the flexibility would be helpful because they originally, in their CIP, asked for over four million, and this was kind of like trying to find the middle ground on that. And I'm not sure if it would be a half a system or whole systems.
So just some flexibility on that, okay. I think the only other comment I had is just about the bond, and I think this is a fair statement, that all of these are longstanding capital needs, where it says, fund a variety of capital needs. I would suggest we put longstanding capital needs so that this is not, doesn't give the impression that this was all dreamed up this year, that these have been on the CIP list for many, many years. So that would be my final suggestion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bizani. I would agree with your premise, sir, but that those capital, these capital projects were not a high priority until just recently, until we decided to do a referendum. So most, when you do capex in a business, you rate the capital projects from number one to number whatever it is, and you pick the ones you're going to do as a hot top priority. These came up, you know, within the last year, and so it's in a referendum, and that's why I disagree with the referendum. It should be just, these things should be competed with, with all the other capital projects that we have facing us as a county.
Mr. Hedrick.
I would make mention that Brown Park has been on the CIP for years, but at our last meeting, as I recall, when we were asked to do something about pickleball, that wasn't the first time we heard about pickleball, but we've been hearing about it for a year or so, at least one of my colleagues was more than willing to take money from Woodville to do restrooms and et cetera, to do pickleball, where pickleball was already planned for Brown Park. So my point being, there was some movement at that time away from setting specific priorities and staying on track with specific priorities.
Most of these projects have been long-term. The only difference is we haven't had the funding to do them, and that's why they haven't been considered. So, okay, any other changes than what was mentioned by Mr. Gibson?
Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
When I presented the initial draft by administration, by Ms. Steele, I had some concerns. And because of the statute, which requires that you present the materials associated with the referendum in a neutral manner, so, and although it really doesn't matter too much to me that two are against and five are in favor, I'm constrained by the statute. So I'm trying to make sure that the materials that are to be approved by the board, a majority of the board, are neutral. And so the initial draft had needs and wants, and I tried to divorce the materials from needs and wants, because when you talk about needs and wants, and it's just material approved by the board, you are basically saying, approve this referendum, because these are what we need, this is what we want, and this is how we're going to fund it. So I tried to, tried to take away the needs and the wants, tried to make it as factual and as objective as possible, saying, if you approve this referendum, here's where the money is going to be spent, and here's what the probable increase in your real estate taxes are, without reference to, we really got to do this, or we really want this. So that's why it doesn't have longstanding in it. That's why it doesn't have the fire department really needs this. It does indicate that it will render us compliant with certain aspects of the law, which is a factual statement. So to the extent that these materials are educational and are factual and are objective, and you may feel that weighs in favor of your position, either against tax increase or in favor of projects, that's a wonderful thing. But whatever you do in approving this or modifying this, please keep in mind that what you need to put out there as a board is objective and neutral and not biased.
Is this objective?
I have vetted it, and I think it's objective. Yes, sir.
Quinn, when would you be able to have changes?
Put it on the website or?
It's the first time we called him up.
I know. This is the podium, that's where you speak.
I was going to try to look it up, but we can have changes done tomorrow and sent to the printer tomorrow, then they take a week to get back with us.
Would you be able to do the changes as proposed based on?
that's a wonderful thing. But whatever you do in approving this or modifying this, please keep in mind that what you need to put out there as a board is objective and neutral and not biased.
Is this objective?
I have vetted it and I think it's objective, yes, sir.
Quinn, when would you be able to have changes?
Put it on the website or?
It's the first time we've called him up.
I know. This is the podium, that's where you speak.
I was going to try to avoid coming up, but we can have changes done tomorrow and sent to the printer tomorrow. Then they take a week to get back with us.
Would you be able to do the changes as proposed based on Mr. Wilmot's guidance, what Mr. Gibson requested and have it back to Mr. Wilmot tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Before it goes to the printer? Mr. Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do believe that longstanding is factually accurate and educational. However, out of an abundance of caution, I will withdraw that request. I would like the election date bolded and the hours of the election added. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay. Okay, so do you need to see it if that's all that's added? Show it to Mr. Wilmot before it goes to the printer and let's get it done. Okay.
And hand deliver the, to every.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bizani.
Will we be able to get a PDF copy as soon as it's finalized with the board? Thank you.
Okay, so there's no motion needed, it's just going, okay. We'll go to, let's see, where are we? Board appointments. We have Corky Hogg on the Community Policy Management Team wishes to be reappointed.
So move for a second.
Okay. Anybody, Petsworth Historical?
No, sir.
Middle Peninsula Public Access Authority, need a alternate?
I will gladly take that on to back you up, Mr. Hudson.
All right.
If that works for the board instead of trying to find a citizen. Because you're, how many times have you missed that meeting since you've been on there, probably none?
Once or twice.
Right. So I will gladly take that on, I'm working with the folks I already work with on the PDC anyway and already know all the players. If that's the board's will, I'll be glad to take that.
All right. So we'll put Mr. Crisco for the alternate. And Mr. Wright for change to primary for the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Attention Commission. Aren't you a little old for juvenile?
A little bit, yes.
Is there a second for that one? Okay. And Dr. Wirth, utilities. Okay, as the ones that are passed that we have first and seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go that after the closed meeting, county attorney items?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's what's next, yes. Boarding commission reports? Supervisor discussion? Okay, Mr. Wilmot, would you read us into closed session? Sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. I was giving, right?
All we can.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting on September five, 2023. And whereas the nature of the subject is discussion or consideration of the disposition of an interest in publicly held real property, the water and sewer system. The discussion of same in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes herein expressed pursuant to legal authority herein reciting.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Dr. Wirth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting. And whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. And the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in the said closed meeting was the matter identified in the resolution by which it was convened. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene an open meeting at its meeting of September five, 2023 and certifies the matter set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Wirth?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move to the discussion on the potential disposition of real property, water, and sewer system. Dr. Wirth?
So I understand the discussions that we've had. Understand the discussions we've had and I take into account the concerns that we've all had and the opinions of everyone. But I would like to start it by making the motion to accept the one on page 200 to reject the proposal.
Second.
Ms. Steele, we have a motion, a second, is there any discussion before we vote on this? Mr. Crisco.
Just want to make my reasoning known for why I'm going to abstain. I do not have enough information to vote for or against this proposal.
Same here.
All right, Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Hudson?
No, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Crisco, you're abstaining. Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Abstain.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Wirth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, there's only one other item on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.